Because we lost feed, it had to like restart.
Okay.
YouTube stream, so if anybody was watching, they're gonna have to reconnect. They reconnect. If they just, you know, refresh their browser, it'll come back up.
Okay. Thanks, everyone, for your patience. I guess this is as good a time as any for me to ask the commissioners a question here. So you can see on our screen, we have Wendy Rein- Reinhold. Wendy was evidently, she signed up for to be a testifier, and she signed up in time, but she just got missed by accident from getting put on the list. I don't believe she was on this morning because I didn't, I don't remember seeing her name, and I did ask if there were any testifiers that I missed, and nobody spoke up. However, she's here. It's this agenda item, and so it's up to you guys if you want to open public testimony to hear Wendy. Go ahead, Mike.
I moved to reopen public testimony to allow Wendy Reinhold the opportunity to provide her three minutes of public testimony.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Seconded by Fay. All in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay, Wendy, are you there? Let's hope she's there. The placeholder is there. Wendy, if you are available?
She just sent in a note that came up on the side that says that she doesn't have a microphone and that she's sorry.
Oh, I see that now. Okay. All right. Well, we tried.
In that event, I'll make a motion that we close public testimony.
Thank you. Motion to close, seconded by Barbara. All in favor?
Hi.
Thanks, you guys. Okay. So where were we?
I was asking questions.
Okay.
There was no traffic study in 1990s with it prior, and apparently there's no study now. The traffic 22 years later is much heavier, and this project is across some of the intersections of Leighton, Waluah Road, Waluah, Kaakai. So I'd like to ask the applicant, those are substandard roads, by the way, I'd like to ask the applicant whether he would agree to a traffic city of this project in back now and in the future on the traffic on Lee Drive, Kaakai, and Waluah. At the intersection of Waluah and the Lee. I believe a traffic city would be required if there was a new application. Are you going to do a traffic study before this, so we can see a traffic study 22 years later?
Sid, are you there? I don't see you. Or do you want Evan to? Okay, there you are. Go ahead if you'd like to respond.
Sure. I think I had indicated earlier that, you know, a traffic study was not required, you know, for SMA applications. It would be definitely required for a time zone, rezoning time extension, you know, provided that you have like 50 or more movements. And I was, you know, that's the reason why I kind of pointed out through the topless Intimated Court of Appeals decision that provided guidance to Planning Commission in terms of how to address traffic as it relates to SMA.
Okay.
The application is considered a special, a mandatory use form, a number C88, not a SMA. So I'll take that answer as a no, you're not willing to do it regardless of that court decision you referred to. Next. Diamond bought the price from, did they buy the property from Pacific Monarch or somewhere else?
I'm gonna have to defer that question to the attorney.
Pacific Monarch. Commissioner, it was Pacific Monarch.
When Diamond bought the property, they, the price and cost were, or the price was determined, as well as the term of sale, there's no claim of fraud or misrepresentation by the seller, right?
No, but I also want to, and I don't have all of the details, but Pacific Monarch went insolvent because of the recession, and Diamond acquired a number of their assets, including this property.
Diamond took on the risk of completion when they bought from Monarch, right?
Sure, if you acquire a property, it's your property, and you need to do what you need to do with it.
So Diamond decided whatever upgrade, whatever upgrades and design and cost that might add to the project, and they voluntarily assumed the risk of the feasibility city, and one was to be conducted. And what might reveal, correct? The feasibility city was not a condition of the purchase.
We acquired the property in 2012.
Without a, without a condition of running feasibility city, is that right?
With what?
So the cost of construction, what you're risking should be no surprise. Isn't that right?
I'm sorry, Chair, I couldn't, I couldn't.
The cost of construction was a risk assumed by Diamond, and it should be no surprise, whatever it is. Is that right?
I suppose so, but circumstances change every year and through different economic cycles.
And the increase in price were natural increase over five or 10 years, or was assumed by Pacific, look into it, or, and that was assumed by Diamond. Isn't that right?
I'm sorry.
If there was an increase in cost over the period of time when Pacific first built, that increase over five or 10 years or more was something that Diamond assumed.
Yes. I think we can all agree that's a true statement.
Yeah.
Chair.
Can we move on, Mark? Is there?
There's more.
Something else that you don't already know that we can maybe find out from these folks?
Well, if you let me finish. Your application referred to the feasibility study as the reason why you wanted another delay. But then all these things, the costs of the time involved and the upgrades and, well, that wouldn't, did you assume that risk?
So I don't know what you mean, Commissioner, about application with regard to the feasibility study. There have been a number of reasons why there have been a delay. Sydney initially spoke to some of the corporate changes. They went public in 2013. They went private in 2016. That's what happens in a corporate environment. Sometimes there's a change of controllers to assets. There were changes in terms of construction costs and what was feasible, certainly. We had agency issues. So there have been a number of reasons why there have been delays outside of just the initial acquisition and the risks we took on at that time.
Going public to private and winning how much you had credit is something that undermines control, right? No one forced them to go private or prevent them from getting credit whenever they thought it'd be a good idea.
I don't think that decision is under, in any one person's control. That is a larger decision that I can't speak to.
Well, I don't mean to interrupt. If I interrupt, please let me know.
Okay, can we move on? Do any other commissioners have questions?
There are several other questions.
Well, we can't just go on and ask 20 questions when there are other commissioners who might have questions as well. They might have one or two.
Well, they might have one or two after they hear the answers. Now. The corner in your neighbors got 15 years of nothing, and you want another five years. No curb scutter sidewalk, broke one of the substandard roads even though they're heavily used, are walking to our traffic. Is the applicant willing to install the sidewalk and other related improvements if this matter is further delayed?
Commissioner, you're speaking to the current condition that's already part of the prior approval? Yes, certainly, certainly.
You're willing to do that right away?
I can, I can certainly go back to the client. I can't commit to a particular date right now.
You know, like normally, if I might, yeah, normally, like off-site infrastructure improvements are done in conjunction with the project itself for a couple of reasons. One, it relates to cost, and the other one is that if you make this off-site improvement, and then you're gonna bring in every equipment that's gonna result in the destruction or the relocation of the improvement that's already made, somehow it just kind of like doesn't make sense. And that's the reason why in the original condition, which I think is a wise one, is to time the completion of these improvements in conjunction with the, any use of the property.
So you built the underground garage and the foundation, but you don't want to build anything that might help the public, like the roads and sidewalks that you otherwise require to build? Is that right?
Yeah, the project is.
Can I speak?
The project, obviously, is like far from completion. And, Madam Chair, like if I might wanna make a, you know, like a request maybe of either you or your counsel, you know, just trying to see where some of these questions are leading to as it relates to the guidelines and the objectives of the SMA.
I understand, yeah. I wanted to comment because I, I thought the same thing that you did, Mark. I thought, why wouldn't they be doing this sidewalk ahead of time to benefit the community? But if you think about what Max said, and if you think about the logistics of building this project, you don't want people walking directly in front of it, underneath it. They need to have that space to work.
But.
I'm sorry. Now, don't interrupt me. Mark, please don't interrupt me, and I'm moving on.
I'm sorry, I thought you were finished.
No, I'm moving on to other questions. Mike, go ahead. Uh, Mike, unmute.
Thank you. Also, I just wanted to affirm what Commissioner Van Pernis said about the, uh, let's see, the, the going public and then going private as being a result of the applicant's decision that was not outside of their control. You know, these are decisions that they made that, that affected their ability to do the project within the conditions that were established. Moving on from that, you know, we're looking at a project where we've seen multiple revisions and redesigns and are now again looking at another redesign. And my question is, at what point does the redesign go so far as it is no longer in line with the existing SMA permit, and a new SMA permit would be needed for this newly designed project?
Does the county want to respond to that, or Sid?
I'd love for the county to respond to that.
Yeah. Jessica, are you there?
Yes, hi. So, um, at this point, it would, it would have to go beyond the bounds of the original permit in order to, you know, in order to require a complete resubmital.
So is that the parcel boundary, or is that the boundary of the footprint of the proposed project?
It would be the, it would be the proposed use. It would be the proposal for, for the development, for the use.
That's not super clear in that if they're proposing a retail and condominium project to house 48 units, and now they are requesting an extension with language in here that's gonna be a redesign, and we don't know what that redesign is gonna be like, how can we prove an extension when we don't know what's being proposed?
Yeah, I hear you're, I hear what you're saying exactly. They will have, again, it will have to go through plan approval, and plan approval is pursuant to the SMA use permit and would have to comply and be within the bounds of the SMA use permit. So plan approval will not be granted basically if it doesn't meet what was described in the use permit.
So the Leeward Planning Commission, oh, sorry, go ahead. I apologize.
Oh, yeah, no, I just wondered if Jeff Dara wanted to elaborate on that at all based on when a new SMA use permit might be required.
Well, just as what you had mentioned, it's, I mean, there's a number of factors that can come into play. If the application expands, usually that's the issue. Something goes beyond what was originally requested. Not less than, but more than, whether it's more land area, whether it's a greater project, a greater use. In this particular case, it appears that they're actually, they have less units than what was originally proposed. They've let go of the office and commercial, or a majority of it. The, the other key factor that is unique in this particular application is time. Very rarely do we see an application that comes before us where we see somebody asking for a third or fourth time extension. And this is the discussion that we had about a year ago when we went through the talk about time extensions and permit amendments. And that was a thought about the direction the Leeward Planning Commission was considering, that there comes a point where we, we need to change the rule to say that if you've gone beyond a certain amount of time, you need to come back in with a brand-new permit, not just a time extension request. Unfortunately, that rule hasn't changed at this time. The other factor was that that would play in if the applicant didn't come in within a timely manner. Let's say that the time stopped a year or two, I mean, they came in a year or, a year or two or three after the actual time. In this case, they came in in time, in a timely manner to request a time extension. The other matter I wanted to bring up on this is that, and I know Sid has been touching upon it, is the matter of traffic and its relationship to the SMA. There was that court case, the topless case that you may be familiar with, that we put in our applications at times to refer to that, that relationship between traffic and SMA approvals. Unless there is a clear nexus regarding traffic impacts to the SMA, usually that is not something we can incorporate. It's unique to see this condition in here. Condition number four, where it's requiring the applicant to put in curb scutters, sidewalks, and other improvements in an SMA permit without a change of zone, that is usually nowadays, that's a tough, that's, that's, there's a line there that we may sometimes get challenged on. But in this case, the applicants are amenable to it. When it originally was approved, topless, I think, came after that. And the reality is, without curb scutter sidewalks on this project, it would not be a safe project. It would not be a good project. But to be able to require the applicant to do a traffic study, and out of that traffic study require them to do improvements, off-site improvements, that's where our challenge comes at times with just SMA permits. Normally, it's with change of zones where you're increasing the density or you're, in this case, this is zoned resort. They're coming in for just the SMA permit. I didn't mean to go off track there. I wanted, the main issue that you were asking is, when do we really require a new permit? And again, at this point, it would be the commission's request, in this particular case being if the commission needs additional information to be able to come to a decision, and the only way to do that is to have particular information that has not been provided to be provided as part of the application, or to come in with a new application. In this particular case, the director has recommended that the application is sufficient and that the conditions are sufficient, and he's recommending approval.
Thank you, Jeff.
I have two more amendments I plan on offering, and I'd like to question about that. Did you cut me off?
Did I cut you off? Sure, go ahead, Mr. Van Pernis.
Thank you. Electric vehicles are becoming a normal increase in the future. Rental car companies are buying more and supplying more, and rental cars are your time-pure clientele. This project originated in the 90s, went to different hands, and it's time the developers in this commission got into the 21st century. Would the applicant be willing to agree to installing four electric vehicle charging stations as common once to the condominium during initial construction? And I point out that where it's all fitting electric charging stations is much more expensive than putting them in originally. Would the developer answer that question?
Madam Chair, like is, is the question whether the applicant is willing to accept the condition that mandates electric charging stations? Is that the question?
Yeah. Is that already a condition? Is that what you're saying, Sid?
Whether, whether that's the request that Commissioner Van Pernis is making, whether the developer is willing to have that as a condition?
Yes.
I think so.
Can we have a moment to kind of confer on that, in the meantime, having, continue with his other requests?
Okay. The other matter is that I don't see another five years well resulted construction. It is conducive to sale, and I'd like to know whether a sale or, the labor sale is in the works. The, you can all find out at the same time. The last issue is, will the applicant agree to filing a new permit or additional permit to be reviewed by the planning department director, the planning commission, and then go through County Council Committee and planning and the full council if the project doesn't get built in the next five years?
Okay, who wants to answer? Sid, Evan, Kim?
What it is, is like the way the staff is proposing the condition, the staff's condition is that if the project is not completed in five years, then any extension requires this entire process again. Because the site is zoned, we start, there is only council involved. It's pure and simple, planning commission's discretion to approve or deny the request.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the short answer to Commissioner Van Pernis's question is that if the project as conceived is not completed or developed in five years, then it'll have to be vetted by the same commission again.
But that excludes the planning department, planning director, and county council as far as adding conditions. That statement that you take from the recommendation refers only to the commission. My question is, would the applicant be willing to go in front of all of the four said parties as a new application?
Well, you know, if the time extension were approved, then as the staff had pointed out, there is a need for plan approval because the current plan approval expires. And so the issue is like whether the plans for plan approval that will be submitted again to the planning department for approval, whether that will be identical to what was considered back in 2017, or whether there will be some change that's generally consistent with the envelope and the other guidelines that, of the original SMA.
Big Dan doesn't know because I'm not asking for plan approval. I'm asking whether they'll agree to an application which may include plan approval, conditions, everything a new application might involve.
I'm sorry. So, in other words, like hypothetically, if, if this time extension were approved, and then there is non, non-performance that is opposed to any extension, then there would be like a mandatory new application be filed. In other words, like no further time extension.
Correct.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Sid, he was also asking if, if there's a sale in the works?
Not to my knowledge, but I'll defer that. Maybe the attorneys may know more than I do on that.
Go ahead, Kim.
I know of no sale. There is nothing on the table.
Okay. Max, I saw your hand up.
I'm not sure if this is within the realm of possibility, but given some of the discussions of being towards the uniqueness of the original application in SMA, you know, now being well within a period of hopeful stability for Diamond Resort, is there anything that would maybe lean towards precedent of maybe a plan in good faith only, perhaps, but? in good faith only perhaps, but a plan being submitted in a timely manner for approval in the next 24 months? To at least lean towards hope of completion of construction in five years? I don't know if that's a question for the county or a good faith reasonable question towards Diamond Resorts, but looking at a five-year timeline, if it was granted, you're going to design, you're going to submit for approval, you're going to come up with your construction team, contractors, all of these issues and complete within a reasonable amount within five years? Is any of what I'm seeing have been done before or agreed to, given that I mean somewhat alluding to this might be the last extension or, you know, if we're going to put it within the realm of possibility in five years?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you. This actually was a topic of discussion at our last county council meeting. And it's the reality of things is that when the planning commission or the planning director puts on a timeframe to complete construction, it doesn't take into account all the, all the moving parts that have to happen before you can even put a shovel in the ground. And sometimes that can take a long time. And by the time you get your plan approval, your building permits, your grading permits, your all, all of that, you have very little time left to be able to construct the project and you find yourself in a position where you have to come back to commission and/or council for a time extension. So one of the discussions was to be able to begin that time of construction at the time that they have received approval of these previous permits, one of them being plan approval. So in your question, Max, what we can do is put a timeframe that the applicant has two years to be able to secure plan approval and that once they secure that, that is the beginning of construction and they have five years to complete construction. That allows them to submit this plan that's approved. And so everybody knows what's going to be built for this project. They're able to start have five years to construct this project. Is that something what you're looking for?
I guess in a polite way, given the location, the history of it, just trying to light a little bit a candle of hope, one that we're granting this in good faith to Diamond Resorts and also in good faith with Diamond Resorts wanting to move through this process and complete this project. And kind of alluding to as well that we're not certain of what's being designed. Maybe it's a little different. You know, I like the fact that it seems it's being mentioned that it's being reduced and approximate volume. But you know, if you're in Kona and you've driven down Lee Drive, you've seen this slab for a while. It'd be great to just kind of put something forward that in good faith, we're working towards something, not just a five-year window. That might land a little more, you know, to what Commissioner Vatusek has mentioned as far. You know, can we design something that's approved and feasible and, and you know, it seems like everything is settled in with Diamond Resorts in this location and if there's no sale pending, just a little more possibly leaning towards this is probably your last approval. What can we do as the commission and planning department to not only favor forward a favorable recommendation, if that's everyone's thought, but also lean towards you know, what it's really going to take to do this, which is going to be a substantial commitment? Just wanted to put that.
Perry, your turn.
Yeah, I'd like to kind of echo that. I'd like to see some kind of cap on the time horizon. I mean, 20 years later, we keep asking for extensions. Each one with a different story, it seems to be a recurring theme. So I would like to see some kind of language that allows us to say, this is your final extension, you know, and put a cap on things.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I mean, we also have the ability to say that, that it's been long enough that these these extensions don't meet the definition of, you know, something that was outside of the control of the developer. What we're facing right now with the COVID-19 pandemic, that's something that's outside of their control that will have a significant effect on their ability to complete this project in five years. Diamond Resorts, they're a cruise ship owner, as I understand it, is one of their business ventures, which has been completely shut down. I imagine the vacation industry as a whole has taken a pretty big hit as, as has ours here in Hawaii over the past six months. So to me, that, that is something that's outside of the control of developer. But what, what they're proposing here, what they're justifying here is not. And you know, there's no one for us to delegate this to. We're not recommending this to the council or anything. We are the approving body for a special management area permit. So if we decide that this has been enough, then we can do that.
I just want to play a little devil's advocate here that we've, we've extended permits that have lapsed a lot longer than this one has. And the county feels that the applicant was in in a timely manner as well. So just to keep that in mind. Jeff, go ahead.
With the concerns that are being raised regarding another time extension, I've never seen this before, but it is something to consider that you can include a condition that clearly says that there will no, there will not be a further time extension, that the applicant will have to come in with a new application for any additional time. And so that's a consideration that can be made in regards to seeing this thing continue on with more time extensions.
Mike, Mike?
So, you know, in my opinion, when you look at the second point about granting of the time extension would not be contrary to the general plan, Kona Community Development Plan and zoning code. I agree that what's being proposed here is not contrary to any of those things. But the fact that appropriately zoned property has been held hostage from development for the past 22 years is contrary to the zoning code, the Kona Community Development Plan that indicates that this is where this type of activity is supposed to happen. And because of the choices by the developer, that activity is not happening.
Mr. Van Pernas?
Medical charity stations, please.
I'm sorry?
I'd like an answer on the electrical vehicle charging stations, whether they're agreeable.
Sid? Or Kim, go ahead.
Chair, we haven't had a chance to confer with our client. That's kind of a big commitment. We need to be able to do that.
Okay.
I also just, it's okay, I wanted to make a clarification because it was stated that the changes in corporate structure completely Diamond's fault. The going back to private was a hostile takeover. I didn't realize that completely out of the control of those who were operating at the time. And also just, I just wanted to make the point that from, you know, we heard a lot of public testimony. We're talking to the client about it, they understand, they acknowledge. And it seems like people really want something to be built. The frustration is that nothing's getting built. And that is the client's desire as well. It's an asset sitting there not making money. So to the extent we can get redesigned and move forward, we want to. If the commission decides to make this an example and we have to go back through the process, we'll do it, but it's just going to take longer. So I just wanted to sort of reiterate that because we are listening to the community and there is a commitment to being in Kona.
Okay, yeah. Anyone else? Okay, there's no further questions. Mr. Van Pernas?
Yes, I'd like to propose several amendments in the form of potential conditions.
Okay.
The first condition would be that the applicants and their successors be required to provide four vehicle, electric vehicle charging stations as part of their condominium common elements in either their garage or parking lot or wherever else we should put it on their property.
Okay. Is that, I thought you said you had several. That was one, right?
That's the first one I thought you might want to vote on. One before I go into the others.
Why don't you go ahead and tell us what the other ones are?
The others are that regardless of it being a SMA or special use permit application as stated in their application, the traffic site involving Kahakai, Alii, and Walua be provided and that this application be postponed until that traffic review is present and available for review. The third condition or third pos is that the permits are requirement of certain roadside road improvements be constructed now. There are liability issues with the county encouraging walking in that unimproved area. So I would move as amendment that they comply with that condition for immediately. And lastly, my amendment would be, as Mrs. Gerald referred to, that no further delays or application for delays or continues as will be granted as any and any I new proceeding will require a totally new application as a new project. And they shall also provide the plan approval process compliant.
Thank you. Discussion about that, you guys? Max?
Just to clarify if I can, Mr. Van Pernas, I did hear about four parking stalls for electric vehicles.
No, they're not parking stalls, electrical charging station.
Four charging stations. The second, the second one is to require a traffic study, even though it's not required. The third is to make condition four due upon accept, upon amendment and to not require any further extensions. That's basically what he said.
I guess as a point of discussion, I appreciate, you know, looking forward electric vehicles, things of that nature. I as far as looking at this project and really wanting to express at least my concern and optimism that this will actually get built. I'm hesitant to really go any further than beyond suggesting that their design that they come forward with, I would assume would be a forward-looking design that would incorporate charging stations. I think in all honesty, and I don't think doing road improvements immediately is going to be within a construction plan that's going to be feasible. So with that extent, I guess by saying there isn't any other extensions, you know, I'm not sure on how to propose this, but also given the effects that Mr. Vatusek made very clear, we may be looking at a difficult four years ahead in recovery of economy and things of that nature. What I'd really like to see with this five years is at least have a substantial plan developed and actually have shovels in the ground and look at the foundation at least being completed. You know, obviously, once they're moving forward, we're not going to stop them. But to try and impress that, at least for my thoughts, as being on commission, that this is something that really needs to happen within this window. And, and you know, showing in good faith that they are moving forward and, and developing this project. How that happens, I'm not exactly sure how to put that together. But I think if we're willing to be flexible enough to extend this SMA that I think, I think everybody's of the oppression, we need to at least see construction has begun underway and is underway within this five-year window. That's my thoughts this time.
May I respond?
Sure.
The electrical charging station amendment refers to when they carry out construction, they'll include that. So it makes their project more valuable and it's less expensive than conversion layer. In terms of the curbs, gutters, sidewalk, you refer as road improvements, I'm merely suggesting that they complete special condition four, which is severable from their other construction. And lastly, you say, well, we want to see them go forward, which I want to see them do too. But I think they need to deal with the increased traffic in the turn lane that's the traffic study. And I think that the sidewalk improvements are severable. They have a foundation in place, so saying, well, get a foundation in place at a certain time is sort of frustrating to me.
Sid? Would, would DPW be dealing with roadway and any required left turn lanes or anything like that during plan approval? Is Kahakai, is that a county road?
Kahakai, Walua Road, Alii Drive, they're all like fall under the county jurisdiction. So Public Works would have to review the off-site improvement requirements like as condition for curb gutter sidewalks. In terms of like, you know, what's going to be required on, you know, desired at Walua Road intersection, I really don't know because it's it's a relatively complicated intersection because it comes like at a, at a Y where it intersects with Alii Drive and it's not a standard T. If I can kind of like, you know, move off of that and just follow up on what Commissioner Newberg was saying. And I'm just trying to, you know, scribble my notes all over here is that like, one is like the you know, two, and even if you have like a five-year construction window, you kind of want to see some, some plans submitted like earlier rather than later and such that, you know, a person doesn't come in like at the fourth year and say like, oh, I really don't have enough time and all that stuff. So as Jeff had indicated, you know, there have been some other conditions where there's a requirement that plan approval be submitted by X period of time and the project be completed by Y period of time. Now, if you, for example, have a condition that says that plan approval must be secured within a two-year window, then presumably you have a three-year construction window. I understand what Mr. Vatusek and Mr. Newberg is saying too. Because of COVID, you know, there is always the potential there is always the potential that it could slip, especially the construction end, so you may not necessarily complete it within a five-year window. But I would kind of like suggest that if what you'd want to see is still construction activity going on, then perhaps it could be tied in with the building permit process because if you secure a building permit and you keep it active, then you know that you have to kind of like somehow do it. And Jessica used to work for building, so perhaps maybe she can clarify for me or corroborate that, that, you know, if you don't do anything, then obviously the permit expires and you could tie in, you know, another condition that would say that any, you know, subsequent, you know, if you don't comply with that condition, that requires a resubmital or a new submittal. In other words, like there's a sunset date on this current SMA application.
Mike, go ahead.
So one of, one of the difficulties that we have in establishing a realistic timeline for when this development can be done is that we don't have the developer here. And we've, we've got attorneys on Oahu and we've got Sid, but we don't have the developer here where we can ask them, how long do you need to get the plans together to redesign the project so that you can submit for plan approval? Because, you know, I, I agree with what Kim said. What people want is people don't, people want this to be developed. People don't want to have this structure taking away from our community. We don't want to have Artura seeing this and thinking, man, this place is kind of ghetto, you know, maybe we should have gone to Maui. But what we, what we want is we want completion and the history of this developer has shown that they're, they're not capable of doing that right now or haven't been capable to date. The only way I'd be comfortable moving forward is if we can tighten down the requirements for them to get plan approval within a certain amount of time. And if that's not met, then we can't tie this up any longer and it's got to trigger the need for them to come back with a new SMA permit. I would love to talk to the developer and ask them how long they need, but the fact that they're not here, to me, indicates that they don't have serious plans to develop this. You know, the fact that we're being told that there's going to be a redesign instead of being presented with the redesigned plan means that this isn't really a priority. So either we tighten down the language and say that they've got a year to get plan approval and show us that they're serious, or they got to move on and come back with a new SMA permit when they're ready to do something.
Sid? Do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, Madam Chair, like, you know, the, the applicant actually like is listening in on, on the web and he's right now like in Florida, so, you know, there's a significant time difference. What I'd like to request, and you know, we've already had this discussion with the, I've already had discussion with the attorneys that, you know, there are like, there have been like a number of questions or issues raised by the commissioners and I think all of them are good. I think we'll have to go back to the applicant and, you know, try to see if we can address some of the questions relating to trying to tie down a little bit more specific construction timetable so that we can appropriately come up with some conditions that may be acceptable to the, the planning commission, you know, assess his, his views relative to the, the idea about having a sunset clause on the SMA application. That is to say, if you don't perform, then it automatically runs away, you know. Have him, you know, consider the, what Commissioner Van Pernas is asking about maybe four electrical charging stations. I mean, personally, I don't know what the cost is, you know, but they, as being in the construction, the construction-related industry would have a better idea whether they can accommodate that. And, and lastly tied in with that is like what we originally had proposed, which was trying to come up with the, sort of like a nuisance mitigation plan, you know, during the interim while these things are all working its way through to help address some of the concerns raised by the neighbors. So in light of that, like, we would like to request the commission to kind of defer this matter and give us a chance to evaluate it and then we'll work with your staff in terms of having it, having this item rescheduled before the planning commission, whether it's going to be next month or the year, the following months, I really don't know. But bottom line is kind of deferral subject to, I guess, the call of the chair or the planning director.
Okay, thank you, Sid. Max?
I appreciate all these recent discussions. Mr. Fuque, are you in communication at this time? Are you able to ask the developer a question at this time? That question being, I, I think deferral may be a good idea, but given that we are kind of floating with an expired SMA, if we do defer, are they willing to commit to having some substantial answers and at least perimeters by December of this year? So this isn't just going out, you know, beyond this year, you know, now we, is that, is that something you're able to ask?
I'm, yeah, Commissioner, I think I'm very certain that the, if, if, if anything, the latest would be a request for a hearing no later than the end of this year. So November possibly, but I would say more than likely December.
And with that commitment, I guess, one, would that be acceptable to other commissioners? And is that feasible for upcoming schedule with the planning department to fit that in?
Jessica, I don't know if you can speak to that or if Jeff needs to weigh in on.
We'll have to, we'll have to check the availability of the schedule. Jeff, do you know that offhand?
Yeah, we, there's no problem putting it on. December is going to be an earlier meeting. I think it's the 13th, if I'm not mistaken. It's, it's like the second Thursday instead of later because of Christmas and everything. But there, there wouldn't be an issue getting it on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion? Max?
That was a subject of timing there. I wasn't going to put forward a motion, but I guess it seems pertinent with everything on there. I would like to forward a motion. I apologize, I've misplaced my agenda in front of me for agenda item two. DPM Acquisition LLC, DBA, Diamond, Doing Business as Diamond Business, Diamond Resort International, that it be deferred to no later than December 2020's mission meeting. And, and strongly implying that they should have site plan mitigation, that they should have at least the number of units that we're looking at, the number of floors, if there's a commercial contingency, some form of a plan, as well as hopefully a construction schedule to lean towards their commitment and feasibility of this project at this given time, which is an uncertain time, but to hopefully defer and come back to us with some answers and a plan set forth.
The motion went on a little bit.
May I make a second and a amendment to that motion?
Well, you're seconding the motion, so is that what you're doing? Are you seconding the motion?
No, I'd like to amend it first.
Okay, at, at the moment, I'm looking for a second because we have that on the table. Go ahead, Mike.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion to defer by Mr. Newberg and a second by Mr. Vitusik. Discussion? Mr. Van Pernas?
Yes, I'd like to amend the motion. I think it's in front of the amendment to delete the December meeting and say when the applicant is ready because there's a lot of things that the motion asks of the developer.
I think we want them to come back as soon as possible, so I don't know that we want to leave it open-ended, right? Harry, are you going to say something?
No, I'm, I'm listening in and.
Okay, sorry, I thought. Anybody else? Barbara?
Yeah, I'd like to see it sooner this year sometime, and I'd also like to include the idea of the mitigation for the community of what's going on there, that they do something about it. You know, with the homeless people living in the parking structure.
Okay. So the motion was to defer and it, the reasons were in order for them to come up with a, a plan, right? A construction plan, at least something so that we can see what we're looking at and a timeframe, is that right? And what else? And what else did you mention, Max, in your motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To clean it up a little bit, I would say a motion to defer until December 2020 meeting for the SMA permit and their application pending three subjects would be the mitigation of the existing site, two, at least a description of how many units and what we're talking about, floors, commercial space, square footage, and then three, hopefully a timeline of when they plan to submit their plan for approval and possibly a construction schedule.
Got it. Is that what you seconded, Mike?
Yes.
Okay. So Jay, did you want to say something?
Oh, yes, yes, Madam Chair, real quick, just for the record, just to be clear, I noticed that the applicant's attorney is Kim Yoshimoto, but we have no relationship, just so that it's clear for the record. I wanted to say that at the beginning, but we're going to say it now, just so everyone knows. Thank you.
Disclosure of no relationship, okay, very good. Jeff?
Just to correct the record, the December hearing is December 17th.
Seventeenth.
Thank you.
Okay. So Mark, you wanted to amend the motion to make it so that they could come back when they're ready and not December. Did I understand that right?
That's correct, but there's been a second in motion. I think the matter of the answer on the electrical charging stations was included in Max's motion, but not stated.
It wasn't in the motion specifically, no, but the applicants know that that's a concern and they voiced in their testimony that they would be looking into all those issues that we've raised. Right?
I withdraw my motions to, to the later date mentioned in the motion to defer.
Okay, we have a motion on the table that Max made and Mike seconded it. You made a suggestion for an amendment, but that's, it's not a motion. Right. Okay, any other discussion about the motion that's on the table? So Barbara, you commented that you wanted the mitigation to be looked at, so I think Max clarified that and you would like it sooner than later. Harry, did you have any input? Say, do you have any input? Okay, all right, so we have a motion on the table.
Okay, I'm going to take a call of the votes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Newberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Vitusik?
Aye.
Commissioner Van Pernas?
Aye.
Commissioner Yates?
Aye.
Commissioner DeFranco?
Aye.
Chair Carr Smith?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I should have said prior to that, Vice Chair K'aloa?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes seven zero.
Very good. So we will defer this and we'll hope to get more information when we see you back in December, Sid and Evan and Kim.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Take care.
You too.
All right, so you guys, we're at four o'clock. Is there anybody that has to leave or are we okay? As far as commissioners go? You guys are okay?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Okay, we'll proceed then unless, does anybody need a break? Are you okay? We're good. Okay. Moving on the agenda, so I, we know that items three and four were deferred. I'm not going to read them into the record. They were postponed to November meeting. Does the staff have any comments about the postponement? Anything you want to share?
I'll just add that, that the applicants and met with the planning director and deputy director and with other staff and we thought it best because we're working through some issues that would, you know, make a better application and a more solid one, so we thought it was best to wait another month.
Okay. Very good. Great. Then we will move on to agenda item number five. The initiator is the planning director. This is an ordinance amending chapter 25, the zoning code, article two, division six of the Hawaii County Code, 1983, the 2016 edition as amended, to update the time and revocation requirements for the Windward Planning Commission and the Leeward Planning Commission to act on and revoke a use permit to be consistent with the Planning Commission rules of practice and procedure. Staff? Tracy? Yay, we get to see you without the sign in front of your face. Thank you for teaming though. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. As the chair mentioned, this is a planning director-initiated amendment relating to the time and revocation requirements for use permits. If you have any questions, please feel free to stop me at any time for clarification. Can you all see my screen? With this bill, the planning director is proposing four amendments. These amendments are simply to change the zoning code language with the language that is in our current Planning Commission rules of practices and procedures. Three of the four proposed amendments are within section 25 to 64 of the Hawaii County Code. Amendment one will remove the requirement that the commission shall either approve or deny a use permit application no later than 60 days after the close of public hearings or allow for a longer period as the commission is in agreement with the applicant. Address the comments that were earlier provided in, in earlier testimony. This proposed amendment will ideally allow for a longer time period for the commission to either approve or deny any application. Amendment two clarifies that the commission can add conditions of approval that are not limited to the hours of operation in terms of the use permit. And amendment three clarifies that if the commission fails to render a decision on a use permit application in the required time, it is deemed approved unless a contested case hearing pertaining to the permit is pending before the commission, replacing the broader written objection language in the current code. Now, I know all of you have seen some of the comments that have come in to the planning department in regards to the automatic approvals. The history of the automatic approval language dates to 1998 with Act 164, which amended HRS section 91 dash 13.5 to read as you see on. which amended HRS section ninety-one dash thirteen point five to read as you see on the screen. This was an effort to revitalize Hawaii's economy in the late nineteen hundreds. As for the change to remove written objections and replace it with contested case, the department has always allowed for written objections to be submitted on any application. Written objections, however, have not stopped applications from this automatic approval should the commission not come to a decision. Historically, a contested case has been the only deterrent from the automatic approvals as required by HRS. The fourth and last amendment is to delete section twenty-five two sixty-seven and replace it with the following language. Section A now gives the director the authority to administer revocation of use permits when requested by the permit holder. Section B is the process in which the commission shall revoke a permit when requested by the director. Section C explains that written notice shall be done by the director to the permit holder. And lastly, section D is the process to appeal a director's revocation. These proposed amendments are again to provide consistency with the code and our current Planning Commission rules of practices and procedures. The planning director is recommending that the Planning Commission send a favorable recommendation to the Hawaii County Code for these amendments. After the commission got the background and rec, comments came in from Verizon Wireless and AT&amp;T, as well as AT&amp;T. The department is currently working to change our process on telecommunication towers in which that will address Verizon and AT&amp;T's comments. The department has more fine tuning to do and we will present this change in the following months. With that, that concludes my presentation and I can open the floor to any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Tracy. Mike?
Um, it, my understanding is that in the Planning Commission rules, there's a provision that uh, if the applicant requests a deferral, then they're kind of off the clock for that sixty day time period. Do you think that's covered adequately in these tools?
I would have to ask Jeff to go over that. We hadn't discussed any of the deferral language, actually.
The, uh, Commissioner Vetusik, you're referring to the automatic approval language? So what happens is if an applicant um, is amenable to a continuance, then um, this automatic approval does not apply because they're being willing to continue the hearing beyond the deadline from that point. This, this is a situation that has only occurred once in my career um, as a planner, uh, where an applicant was not willing to defer and the Planning Commission could not come to an agreement or a motion one way or another. Um, it, there was a lack of quorum for each vote that was brought up. And the time, the maximum timeframe had come to that point. We had additionally had received a written objection at that time. And the public um, had made a statement that, look, a written objection had been submitted. Doesn't that change the process? And the counsel that we were getting at that time was exactly what uh, Tracy had mentioned is that a written objection does not defer or change the time process, only a contested case. So they clarified that the written objection was specifically to the submittal of a contested case intervention. But again, back to your question, if an applicant is amenable to a continuance, then um, the application can be continued, no problem.
You, you don't think that that needs to be clarified in this language in any way?
I believe it is in the rule. Um, I don't have that. Hold on, I might have it with me right here. Apologize for the delay.
While we wait, bacon is cooked, cookies are baked, discuss.
Yeah, I don't see it here, unfortunately. Um, but I, um, maybe if we can continue with discussion, let me look for that. And then, um, cause there's other issues regarding this um, this bit that may be talked about. I think Jay's uh, talking.
Yeah, go ahead, Jay.
So Jeff, are you looking at, uh, or looking for six dash eight?
Uh, that would be under um, special permits. This would be under seven.
Seven, okay.
Thank you.
So you have cookies? Mike? I have a cookie. Does anyone else have any comments? Max, Barbara? Nothing right now, Perry? Max, go for it. Go ahead.
Uh, just wanted to make mention that as it, language goes into legalese, I get a little bit lost. Maybe towards the end, I think Mr. Vetusik has a good question there, but I guess under my own admission, it's hard for me to understand exactly what we're replacing and making it better, maybe if you could get it over.
Uh, sure, if I could re- restate it, um, the issue that I'm raising is with the automatic approval of um, permits after uh, sixty days following the public testimony. So under the proposed regulations, you know, in accordance with the Planning Commission rules, after public testimony is closed, there's sixty days for the Planning Commission to render a decision on that application. And if you don't meet those sixty days, then that application is automatically approved. But the question is, if the applicant agrees to deferring, then we get an extension on that sixty days so that it doesn't automatically approve after sixty days.
Go ahead, Jeff.
So the, the actual language of that extension is in uh, ninety-one dash thirteen point five. It says that there are a number of factors that could delay the hearing. One of them is a lack of quorum. Um, and that's a result that nobody can see. And so at that point, they say that that's not a, um, you cannot automatically approve the permit based on lack of quorum. The other uh, option it gives is unless an extension is agreed upon to by all parties. And so that's where that um, agreement language comes from. Now, um, we can place that in as an addition um, to our language in the bill to make it clear that the automatically uh, extension will not apply um, as long as a continuance or a time extension is agreed upon um, by all parties.
I, I think that would be appropriate, uh, and having that language, basically copying the language that's in um, Planning Commission rules nine F one, where it states, "The applicant may request the commission to defer on the application. Majority vote of the total membership of the commission is required. If applicant requests to defer the motion on the application, in the event the commission fails to render a decision to defer action within the prescribed time limit, the request shall be denied." But that's what the language is in the Planning Commission rules. And if we're, if we're adding to the zoning rules to make it in line with the Planning Commission rules, we might as well carry that over as well.
Just to be clear, you're not requesting that there be an automatic denial?
No, that's, I'm not, I'm not. I, I think that deferral just means that we, we're not having an automatic approval.
Right. So the, the um, there are two different sections of law that this applies to. Two oh five A for the special management area has its own um, uh, requirements in regards to denial. But again, they, they both apply that if there's an agreement by all parties to extend, then, then the automatic denial or approval is off the table.
Agreed. I mean, I, I again, I, I just feel like since we're doing this,
Sure.
and we're rewriting the, the rules, why not include it so that it's not an implied agreement, but an explicit agreement stating that in the event of a deferral, the clock stops.
Excellent. Thank you.
Director? You have any comment about that?
No comment, that's acceptable.
Makes sense, thanks, Mike. Yeah, it gets kind of scary when you think about automatic approvals. Anybody else have any comments? Questions? Jeff?
Um, since you did make that last statement, I'll just um, make mention that um, there is language in the HRS that allows the counties to create an ordinance to opt out of the opt automatic approval. We're discussing that direction with our corporation counsel to find out what that entails. Um, and so at that point, we may want to move towards uh, take, getting out of that um, automatic approval requirement. It, it's, it's something that a lot of people have brought up and are concerned about. Um, but again, we're just trying to act upon the law at this time.
Yeah, yeah. It's always good to make different documents jive. So I support this. So are we clear as to what we're adding based on Mike's request?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thanks, Tracy. Go ahead, Mike.
Let's see. I'll make a motion that um, we forward a favorable recommendation to the amendments to chapter twenty-five zoning code, article two, division six of the Hawaii County Code nineteen eighty-three, two thousand and six edition as amended.
Very good. There a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Kealoha. Any more discussion about this? Seeing none, uh, Tracy, could we take a roll call vote, please?
Okay. Thank you, Chair. With that, we'll take a roll call. Commissioner Vetusik?
Aye.
Commissioner Kealoha?
Aye.
Commissioner DeFranco?
Aye.
Commissioner Newberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Van Pernas?
Aye.
Commissioner Yates? Aye. And Chair Car Smith?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to agenda item number six. Initiator is the planning director and ordinance amending chapter twenty-five of the zoning code, article one, article two, article four, article five, and article seven of the Hawaii County Code nineteen eighty-three, two thousand and sixteen edition as amended, relating to definitions, use permit requirements, off-street parking requirements, and zoning district regulations for medical clinics and massage, acupuncture, chiropractor, and other small-scale health service facilities. Tracy? You again.
Yes, thank you so much. I promise this is the last presentation of the day. Okay. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. As stated, this is a planning director initiated amendment to the zoning code relating to definitions, parking requirements, use permit requirements, and zoning district regulations for medical clinics, massage, acupuncture, chiropractic, and other similar health service facilities. The next slides will highlight four amendments that the director will be making to the code. If you have any questions, please feel free to speak up at any time or stop me. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
We'll begin with amendment one. This is relating to the definition of a medical clinic. Currently, the definition of a medical clinic states that chiropractic and massage treatment and services are not included as a medical clinic. Therefore, the planning director is proposing that acupuncture and other similar health service facilities should also be listed as included under the definition of a medical clinic. The next proposed change is to the personal service establishment definition. The personal service establishment definition currently includes massage facilities and chiropractic clinics as permitted under, under the personal service definition. The planning director is proposing the removal of massage facilities and chiropractic clinics from this definition so that the definition only includes non-medical personal services. The director has proposed to also remove and other similar uses devoted to the care of treatment of the aged, sick, or the infirm out of the hospital definition located in the use permit section because the department has historically considered these uses as medical clinics. While the planning director feels that these uses no longer fit in their current definition, amendment number two clarifies where these uses will be better suited, especially because the need for these uses are there in the community. Therefore, in this slide, the director is proposing that a use permit can be obtained for a medical clinic, massage, acupuncture, chiropractic, and other similar health service facilities in any of the zoning districts listed in the slide above. When planning staff was considering this code amendment, we realized that there is a conflict and recognize this discrepancy between the proposed amendments and the parking section of our code. We're using this opportunity to rectify these conflicts by adding off-street parking requirements. Therefore, amendment number three adds parking requirements for commercial uses within the RS, RD, and RM zoning as shown on your screen. The fourth and final amendment is amendment four. And it shows that areas that a use, that a massage, acupuncture, chiropractic, and other similar health service facility would be an outright permitted use. For example, listed on this, on the screen is the resort district where the current code allows for medical clinics and personal services as an outright permitted use. The planning director is simply proposing to add the specific uses of a massage, acupuncture, chiropractic, and other similar health service facility as a permitted use as well in these zoning districts. The planning director feels that these uses are appropriate in the zoning districts listed in the slide. The purpose of these amendments is to better define these uses and clarify in which zoning districts these uses will be permitted by right or with a use permit. The planning director feels these amendments will ultimately create a process for these uses to come into the planning department and get any necessary approvals for. And therefore, the planning director is recommending that the Planning Commission send a favorable recommendation to the Hawaii County Council for these amendments. With that, that concludes my presentation and I can open the floor to any questions.
Thank you, Tracy. Commence first, any questions for Tracy? Mr. Van Pernas?
Um, you, you clarify that um, these services, massage, acupuncture, chiropractic, and other similar health services are not chiropractic, and other similar health services are not allowed for a special use permit in residential areas. Yet, you allow it in multiple family residential areas. It doesn't seem appropriate. I think a special use permit should be required if there's going to be medical services in our clinics and any residential area. Why do you, um, have RM with no special permit in other residential areas, such as RS, double-family residential R, uh, two, so on and so forth?
Do you want to answer that, Tracy? Okay.
Go ahead.
Uh, Commissioner Van Purnas, if you look at the permitted uses in the RM zoning district, it allows what's called personal services, which, as part of this amendment, we are separating massage and chiropractic from that use which is currently permitted and creating its own new permitted use. Uh, it is currently permitted there now. All we're doing is separating it and creating a new permitted use.
But isn't this an opportunity to take this kind of commercial activities out of multiple residential, like out of condos and apartment buildings, while they have commercial zoning too?
They don't have commercial zoning. They have certain uses that are commercial in nature that are allowed as a permitted use in those zoning dis, in that zoning district. And again, the main one is personal service uses, which at this time, um, prior to this amendment, allows these uses as permitted.
So you can have these kind of personal services in residential condos?
In RM zoning, correct. It has limitations and has to be approved by the director. Um, if you refer to your, um, let's see, page?
Does it require a special use permit?
Well, normally, these are found in urban zonings, uh, not in agricultural zonings. Um, so they would not require a special permit.
And, uh, multiple, multiple residential?
Correct. Yeah.
If there's an opportunity to change that and have such uses, commercial uses in the excluded from multiple residential? If I was living in a condo, I wouldn't want commercial activity next door.
Well, it's, uh, I mean, this is why we're, why we're here today to discuss this matter. But again, up to this point, um, there was, uh, the county, commission and the council had seen a need to allow certain types of uses as part of a condo or an apartment project, such as hair salons or little, um, personal service uses, even massage and chiropractic. So again, there hasn't been a need for a use permit in RM zoning in condos and apartments up to this point. Um, we as the planning department have not received any complaints relating to these types of uses, um, that are affecting surrounding property owners.
But it, it isn't consistent to require a special use permit in all residential areas except multiple residential? And isn't there a vehicle for changing that?
I, I, I believe I answered that previously. It is an opportunity to look at that, but at this point, that's not what, um, has done previ, has been done previously, and that's not what the planning director is recommending. At this point, we see this as a, a use that, um, has been working, uh, well in the RM zoning district.
Tracy?
Sorry, I should also, also mention that while these uses are going to be, well, are being proposed to be outright permitted, it still doesn't allow them to just come in and get the use automatically. They still have to come in and go through the various administrative functions, such as plan approval, that will require them to meet certain requirements for these specific zone districts that it's going to be an outright use.
Thank you. Mike?
My first question is, in dealing with met, regulation of medical uses in residential and other areas, is there, uh, exemption to home healthcare? So if, instance, if someone, an elderly person doesn't want to move out of their home and requires a live-in nurse who she pays to administer medical care to her in her own home, could that potentially be, uh, a use that would be against the zoning rules?
Uh, we current, uh, this was something that was addressed by the council back in two thousand and seven, I believe, um, where they allowed what are called group living facilities, um, for eight individuals, including staff. This is permitted in all zoning districts. Um, and that, basically, it's, 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 uh, it's people that need, um, medical assistance, similar to what you're saying. And, um, a nurse either lives there, or there's staff that are there twenty-four hours a day.
But not of, I'm talking about establishing a separate facility. I'm talking about in their own home. If someone wants to have a, or, or just to get a massage in their own home, would the person coming to give them a massage need to get a special permit for the property that someone lives in, in order to get a massage?
There's two vehicles for that. If you're referring to massage and not a nurse or medical type thing, um, there's the home occupation that we currently have that has certain limits, um, at this point, because that's in a residential zoning and we're requiring a use permit. We're about to come in, uh, and amend the home occupation, make it clear as to what's permitted there. But if, we've had a number of people come in up to this point, and as long as they meet the requirements of a home occupation, they possibly could be approved as a home occupation. But that's only the people that live in the dwelling and one employee with no signage. So there's very strict limitations to that home occupation. Um.
I, I guess I'm talking more about someone coming to my home to do physical therapy care. Currently, I'm receiving physical therapy care at home, um, because of a injury.
There's this, that's what we call kind of like a mobile service. And it's not just, um, massage or chiropractic. It's, uh, someone fixing a car or somebody, you know, uh, there's all kinds of mobile businesses. We really haven't addressed those in the sense that, um, because it's not something that's established on that property. Um, it's just like a mobile, um, service that comes to somebody's house and washes a car or fixes a car or gives a massage. At this point, I don't see anything in the code limiting that. So you're okay, Commissioner Fatousik?
Glad to hear it. Um, my, my next question, you know, being a, a physical therapy recipient uh, and a devoted husband to a physical therapist, where, where would physical therapy clinics fit within the definition of medical clinic versus other activity?
Right there, it, it says other similar health services. So this would be exactly what that is.
And not a medical facility?
Uh, we've, we've struggled with, um, and that's why we separated these. We've had discussions. And, um, you know, there's been, um, massage and acupuncture and chiropractors that have tried to claim that they were a medical facility or a medical clinic. And we, this was, we wanted to really make clear as to what those uses were. Medical clinics were for doctors, um, and nurses that were providing medical care. We wanted, we knew that there were needs for these types of personal services, such as massage, chiropractic, acupuncture, and like you said, physical therapy. So we've created this separate use. Um, and basically, they go through the very same process that a medical clinic does. They treat it, treat it very much the same.
So do, do you think we should include in the language defining medical clinic what you just said about doctors and nurses? Because that's absent. It says persons engaged in, um, practices of medical or dental profession or occupation.
I, I think what clears it up is the, the, the next sentence, which clearly says, this does not include massage, chiropractor, acupuncture, um, and others in this. So there's the separation.
Yeah, I, I still think that it, it creates a little bit of, um, ambiguity in what is and isn't medical clinic that would be eliminated if we're just coming out and saying that this is for doctors, medic, M D, D O, you know, that, those kind of things that are very clear in the language.
Your thoughts, Director?
The pondering.
I mean, we've, we've tried to, um, at this point, just make it separate. I mean, we can further, uh, consider further defining medical clinic to include doctors and nurses. I, I I'm not sure if there's a great need for that, but, um, it's something to be considered.
I have a question.
Go ahead. Yes, I see you. Go ahead.
What are we talking about? I'm totally confused. Are we talking about somebody coming to your house? Or are we talking about on the street? What are we talking about? I'm lost.
I can answer that. Um, we are talking in regards to creating these specific uses or allowing these uses within these different zoning districts. These uses could be anywhere from a commercial big building to possibly a small approved building or possibly a dwelling-like structure that may be within these zoning districts that we're now proposing.
Coming to, wait, neighborhoods where people live. We're talking about commercial areas.
The proposal is for these uses to be put in various zone districts. We're going, the range from, um, residential to commercial to CDH, which is our downtown Hilo district, as well as our resort district.
We need special parking for somebody to come to my house?
Commissioner Yates, I, I, um, I think this bill is not actually, um, addressing mobile-type businesses. I think we
All right.
The, the discussion that we were talking about was whether or not it does include that. And I think we've made it, um, clear that it, this bill isn't addressing those.
Mr. Van Purnas?
Yeah, I don't think the, uh, it's clear at all. I think the thing needs to be rewritten on I. G. Fatousik. Uh, it's what he says. What they dispense, medical services, for instance, a physical therapy outfit to have a doctor come in. There's other forms of, uh, what might be called medical service, or on commet, or Raku, screen therapy, cupping. I think that all needs to be, uh, we need better definition. So in that regard, I would move to defer this to the next meeting and have, uh, the, uh, the items rewritten to satisfy some of these qualities. In particular, regards to people coming to mobile services. What does that mean? Services in a truck or driving down to a house?
Second?
Uh, could I, um, chime in real quick before?
Yes, sir.
Um, the intention of this bill, um, wasn't to try to, uh, identify all the different types of services out there. Because, um, number one, there are a number of services. There's going to be future services that we're unaware of. Uh, what we wanted to try to do is just clarify that there's these types of services that provide some tor, sort of, uh, health-related service that we wanted to be able to give an opportunity and clear direction as to how they go about, um, either being permitted or if they are permitted in a zoning district. This bill wasn't at all touching any type of mobile use. Um, the medical definition that you see has been in the code for, since nineteen ninety-six. Um, I don't know if it was the same prior to that. Um, all we did in this particular amendment was clarify that the medical clinic does not include these uses because we were clearly separating those uses. Um, I don't know what you're specifically asking the department to do as far as, um, you know, revising this bill or changing it or including additional things. Um, that would be what we need, uh, specific correction.
Well, it's not clear, and I think it needs amendment. And I still moved, uh, to defer for a rewrite, Mr. Fatousik is seconded.
No, that's not, that was not an actual motion, was it? Did I miss something?
Yes, it was a motion.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't
For the referral to the next meeting, uh, which revised, um, revised matter will be suspended. I believe that was seconded, but it's a specific.
My apology. I didn't underst, I didn't hear that that was a motion. Uh, Director Ye?
Hi, so I, I recall having earlier discussions with staff around how much to define or not to define things. And I, I do want to refer to section twenty, chap, uh, section, chapter twenty-five dash one dash five, which has definitions for medical clinic. And as we got into trying to define too much, we just, we, we did decide that it's defined in, in the code. We weren't going to repeat it here. Uh, and so there is a definition for medical clinic. I guess I'll read it really quick. Means an office building or group of offices for persons engaged in a practice of medical or dental profession or occupation. A medical clinic does not have beds for overnight care of patients, but can involve the treatment of outpatients. A medical profession or occupation is any activity involved in the diagnosis, cure, treatment, mitigation, or prevention of disease of which affects any bodily function, but does not include chiropractic, massage treatment, services. Now, I might be repeating what might have been said earlier, but that's one reason why we don't elaborate too much in, in it when it's defined elsewhere. Just wanted to add that. Thank you.
But it is, it is here, Mike. Just so you, it's on page two, the bottom of page two.
Yeah, was that to me?
Sure, go ahead, Mike.
Oh, sure. I didn't know if you were asking me, Mike, or?
Oh, sorry, sorry. Two Mikes. That's right. No, I was talking to Director Ye.
Okay, thank you.
Wanted him to realize that what he just said was in the background report on the bottom of page two. Did you want to say something, Mike, or should I move to Max? Mike Fatousik?
Sure, I, I, you know. Sure, I, I, you know, to me, looking at it, we have this definition of a medical clinic, but we are amending that definition right now. That's what we're doing. And so if we are going to amend that medical, the definition of a medical clinic, I think we should take the opportunity to remove any ambiguity about what could and couldn't be under the definition of medical clinic. And, you know, the definition that Jeff said as the implied definition being doctors' offices, nurses' offices, those kind of thing, is the implied definition for what constitutes a medical clinic versus other smaller health services, facilities. Then I think we should just say that in, in the, in the definition so that there's no room for ambiguity.
But I think a lot of what, what the department is trying to do, from my understanding, is to make the code and rules and all these things jive. And so if he, if the director just said that this definition that's on the bottom of page two is what's in the code, then, then we want to change this? I'm, I'm not sure why.
This, this is the definition that's in the code, and this is the definition that they're proposing to revise with this action.
Right. With just these two small underlined items. Right? Go ahead, Jeff.
So, thank you, Michael, for the, or Mike, for the direction on that. We can work on that. Commissioner Van Pernis, just so I'm clear on your direction, are you asking that we amend this to be able to require a use permit for these facilities in the R M zoning district?
That's one thing I wish you to consider doing, yes.
Is there any other area that you would like us to consider?
I think homes, services, one nurse in a person's home is not a care facility, or a nurse traveling to a house for a few hours to provide them services such as pills and food. I, I think that should be defined. And home services like massage, I'm not suggesting that that'll be licensed, but I think you should define it.
I personally feel like we're getting into micromanagement here. Max, you have a comment?
Yeah, a, a bit separate, separate, but as we're getting into medical facilities, at least what I see before me makes sense to expand it slightly to, you know, maybe add additional areas. I just wanted to make sure as we were kind of getting these questions, that either there would be different zoning or a different language. I guess my question would be, this wouldn't expand out to medical marijuana facilities or dispensaries? Correct? I mean, this is more for care and things of that nature, right?
The medical, yeah, the medical marijuana clinics are actually adjusted under Hawaii revised statutes, chapter forty-six. We don't have control over those. They're actually controlled by the state.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, can somebody clarify for me what the motion is? Because I, I don't, I don't know what the motion is besides, yeah, go ahead, Mark.
I made the motion.
Yes.
Start Mr. Fatu sick seconds, is it?
Yes, I, I get that part. I don't understand what was.
I think the motion was to defer this item to the next meeting.
Because?
Because we would like a redraft from the county on what they intend in light of the matters brought up in today's hearing.
Is the county clear about what it is that they're asking you to change? I mean, that's the point. Barbara, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I really thought this was about something that was already permitted, and all that was happening is the idea of acupuncture and chiropractic, which has become quite popular, and massage was being separated out, so there was a distinction there. They're still all permitted in these areas, right? We're just adding, we're just clarifying these other, you know, what other people are doing. Isn't that what this is about? We're not defining medical clinics or midwifery or marijuana or anything. We're defining that these, in, in these zones, we have, all of these things are already permitted. All we're doing is giving a name to the chiropractic and the massage, things that are more popular now, that need to be defined. That's what I got. I'm sorry. Maybe I'm on the wrong page here.
Jeff, you want to respond?
Sure, that, I mean, the bill heading or the, is exactly what we're trying to achieve through this amendment. And again, sometimes when we're amending a particular bill, other areas pop up that may consider, you know, I mean, there, I, I gotta say, there's a myriad of areas that we need to change, but we try to work on one area at a time. In this particular amendment, we're trying to address this use of massage, chiropractic, acupuncture, and other similar uses, as well as medical clinics, which up to this point haven't been, there's been some ambiguity in our code because there's that part that Tracy had mentioned under the use permit section that says, and other similar uses devoted to the care or treatment of the age, the sick and the infirm. We're taking that out and just clearly defining that as a medical clinic and putting that in the areas that are either requiring a use permit or a permitted use. We're also clearly separating the use of those other health-related uses of massage, chiropractic, acupuncture, and identifying exactly where they need a use permit and where they're permitted. That's the intent of this bill. If, if, we can adjust accordingly to that, you know, like what Commissioner Van Tu, Van Pernis mentioned about requiring a use permit for them in the R M zoning, or we can adjust the definition to make it a little clearer in the medical clinic, but we want to kind of stay focused on the intent of the bill. This bill is not meant to address mobile-type uses at all or home occupations or any of those types.
Thank you, Jeff. I just, I just want to also say, I don't think this is a good time to be restrictive for any businesses right now. We need all of our businesses to give as much permission to them as we can, getting it together after this COVID, after we've been so shut down. So I'm not into restricting massage, chiropractic, or any of those things by bringing it up today.
Perry, do you have anything to share?
I kind of agree with that last statement, you know, as far as we need to be figuring out how we can keep people in business, not how we can prevent them. And also, I, I thought was pretty clear in the definition, section twenty-five dash one dash five. For me, it, it kind of captures everything. It, it, it leaves room for everything, basically.
Yeah, I, I sup, I support the recommendation. I don't necessarily support the motion. Anybody else? Mike, go ahead. Oh, sorry, Max.
Sure, I, I just, you know, I want to indicate that I also support clarifying this and that our, my intention is, is not to hinder the department's ability to make these changes, but to help them remove any potential ambiguity. You know, their stated reason for doing this amendment is to remove ambiguity, and I think that there's still a little bit of ambiguity there that we can take one month to address, and then we're going to have to live with the rule for, you know, potentially the rest of our lives. So if we can do that and, and take one month to address any potential ambiguity in the rule, in the wording, that clearly defines medical facility as stated by Jeff, I think that would make it very clear and remove any ambiguity, make it much more easy to enforce and to, to follow. I'm also agreement with Commissioner DeFranco about, you know, not limiting things. I, I don't support, you know, additional requirements for special use permits for these practices. I think as it is, is, is good. I just want to see it clarified. And, you know, if we could do that today, great, without, without deferring it. If you guys are keeping, think we can do that now, otherwise, next month, we can get it done.
And so your clarification that you want, Mike, is you want it stated that it includes doctors and nurses?
I, I just think that there's still some ambiguity in the definition of medical services as it compares to related health industries. Because we're not explicitly saying that medical, medical clinics is for doctors and nurses. I think that if we included that specific language, that would be eliminating any confusion on it.
But I, I personally push back on that because chiropractor will argue with you that he is a doctor of chiropractic, and there may be some doctors that are licensed doctors in acupuncture. I mean, I don't know why we have to limit that.
Exactly why we need to clarify this. If, if someone can say, hey, I'm, I'm a doctor, I've, I'm a, I'm a doctor of physical therapy, I'm a doctor of chiropractic medicine, how come I'm not a medical service? Whereas if we're saying that, you know, this is for medical doctors, M D, D O, R N, nurse practitioner, we can establish specific certifications that meet the definition of medical office, and those that don't, that fall into this other health services category so that it's clear on who goes where. And it's not, I don't see this as being controversial. It's just a, a clarity thing. It's just removing any ambiguity so that we know what's what, that there's no argument about who's who, what's what, where do I fit within this, this bigger picture.
Okay, hold on, Barbara. Go ahead, Max.
So originally, looking at this, I, I think I was, you know, maybe looking at it simply, I, I agree with Commissioner DeFranco, and it seems pretty much here. I'm, I'm also curious, if I may ask, Mr. Fatu sick, are you concerned that it's not specific enough because you're concerned about somebody may use a, a space or facility within zoning, yet be a practitioner of chiropractic? You're not seeing enough clarity in perhaps mobile or?
No, it's, it's not the mobile thing. You know, I think that Jeff has addressed that, that this is for a business entity. I, I just feel like that clarity, there's not a lot of, for me, there's, there's still ambiguity in the definition of medical services that doesn't actually define the licensing of that medical service versus other health services. I think that that can be clarified, and because there is slight differences in the allowable zoning.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm just going to be really quick, because you have N Ds, you have naturopathic doctors, you have physician assistants, you have a lot of different definitions of people that can argue this, who's a doctor, who's not a doctor, who, who is a medical personnel, who's not a medical personnel, what qualifies them. I'm not sure that we want to go with it, that we need to have that much definition in this. Really do what the motion is trying to do is to just recognize massage, chiropractic, and maybe physical therapy or some, some stuff like that, and separate from what a medical clinic is. And, and if a medical clinic has nurses and doctors, then maybe that's all we need to say today. A medical clinic has nurses and doctors. I don't know.
That would absolutely satisfy my concern, because that would be providing an actual definition of what a medical clinic is.
Jeff?
I, I think we're close in, in, in hearing everyone's discussion. I think if, Mike, if, if you got a minute, I don't know if you can just jot something down in the, you know, that might work on the medical clinic. And then the, you know, the reality is this, whether you're a medical clinic or a massage, chiropractic, acupuncture, or other similar use, you should be going through the same process, or you should be permitted in the same zoning districts. So there's not a benefit one way or another, except in the R M zoning that Commissioner Van Pernis brought up. What we can do is adjust that language and put the massage, chiropractic, acupuncture under the use permit section with the medical. And at that point, I think, looking at the bill, all the uses would be the same as far as medical, massage, chiropractic in all the zoning districts. Wherever it requires a, a use permit for a medical, it requires a use permit for the other. Wherever it's permitted, they're both permitted.
What about pharmacy?
I don't think we addressed that in this bill.
Okay. So in, in that case, you know, medical clinics could mean an office building or group of offices for physicians and nurses engaged in practice of medical or dental, physicians, nurses, dentists engaged in medical practice of?
Very good.
Would that suffice?
Yes.
Or doctors, doctors, nurses?
And dentists.
Yeah, physicians, nurses, dentists.
Very good.
So we're talking about adding that verbiage in and then also adding the use permit for the R S zoning, right?
This would, this would be for the massage, chiropractic, acupuncture, and other similar uses, health uses in the R M zoning, so it was the same process as medical clinics.
Mark?
Let's not forget nurse practitioners. I have to disagree with Commissioner Franco. If we talk about licensed individuals, medical doctors, chiropractors, some massage artists, and some like all are licensed, perhaps there could be a difference between licensed people and unlicensed people. There's lots of people out there claiming to provide services and plague medical services which are not li, they're not licensed, or they're so-called specialty is not one that requires a license.
Go ahead, Barbara.
I, I agree with you. I think they need to be licensed. I think you have to be a licensed masseuse, a licensed acupuncture. I think you have licensing in the state to be licensed. I wasn't talking about unlicensed people, just so you know.
So Jeff, when people come for use permits for these types of businesses, do they have to show? Is there anything that says anywhere that they have to be licensed?
We haven't had a use permit yet for massage, chiropractic, acupuncture, because we're bringing this bill before you. As far as medical clinics, that's when they come before the commission, they bring, there's a lot of detail that's provided as part of the permit.
Mike?
You know, I, again, I just, I feel like us now, at the end of a long day, trying to come up with an acceptable definition for medical clinic, we're more likely to miss something that could be addressed if there was more time to take a good look at how we fit our implied definition of medical clinic into the written definition. And if we take a month to do that, and we come back and we had a good definition that we all agree with? And if we take a month to do that, and we come back, and we had a good definition that we all agree with, I think that's better for everybody than for us to try to put something together now.
Jeff?
So, um, the commission needs to keep in mind that this is a bill that is going before council, and that it goes before the Winward Planning Commission as well. So whatever proposed, uh, proposed amendments that you're making, we would want it, um, we, we get in a place where if we're not able to present it to the Winward Commission, then we're, we're kind of stuck. Because then if we come here and it's approved differently, uh, we go up to council with separate bills.
Then can we, uh, not provide specific language here, but, but just the recommendation for revision to include that topic?
Sure.
And so, well, the best way of us doing that, would that be approving it with recommended revisions? Or?
You would?
Or would that be deferring it?
Uh, again, if we defer, we would end up having to defer the Winward until, you know, I mean, we're kind of stuck, but if you were to ask the director to consider amendments to the, um, medical clinic definition, uh, to come up with a, a more specific definition, we can work on getting that put together, and maybe even consult with you on it, and then present it to the Winward Commission as well. Uh, but again, it wouldn't be something that we could vote on right now, because it's not available.
Director Yee, how do you feel about that?
You know, I guess it's more what, what the commission feels comfortable with. If, if, I, I, I hear Jeff, and that yes, there's a timing issue, but we're, we're also not, we're not up against a clock that's, something's expiring here that has to get done, right? So if, if Winward has to wait for, for us to clarify the language through Leeward, then we take the time to do so. If we want to expedite and we have some flexibility to, to make changes more on the fly, to present something to Winward that we think might, might make sense to, to Leeward, and we all have the flexibility to, to still proceed the council, we're doing so. I'm not sure, that's what I'm hearing from, from Mike. And again, I think this is more about what the commission wants than it is the planning department trying to drive a certain timeline.
Is, is there a reason why this would have to come through Leeward before it goes to Winward? If we deferred it now, could it go straight into Winward and then come back to us?
I, I think Jeff was only suggesting, if, if we know we're going to change the language, we want to, we would want to present that to, to Winward. Because if we change the language, Winward has to see it. So if we know you're going to change it, we'd rather take that step first.
So if Winward can approve it as it is, Mike, then?
Then they'd have to see it again, once we, but I guess my thought is that if we are recommending the revisions, and you guys make the revisions, and it goes to Winward, and they approve it, and we approve it, that's moving on.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's fine, too. Like I said, one way to play it would be, we, we know what your concerns are. We would try to push something in front of Winward, and we could always come back to Leeward with, with, they approve. Hopefully, it's fairly solid and, and no changes, we could proceed. Uh, you know, that's no different than us having to wait to the next Leeward anyway, so I, I kind of feel like.
I'd be okay with that, you know, I, this is super non-controversial. It's just trying to clarify the definition for all of our sake, to save us a headache down the road, you know, and, I think we can get a good definition. I think we all understand where, where this definition is. So to me, I'd be totally comfortable saying, okay, we'll, we'll defer this, and then you guys take, you know, do your, whatever you want to put into there, and take it to Winward, and then when they accept it and they come back to us, we have it in front of us, Winward's accepted it, let's go, you know, let's move forward.
Mr. Van Pernis?
Uh, this is in response to Jeff's comments. Is a ambiguous or badly worded bill quickly approved? There's an unambiguous good bill that we can live with forever?
Well, obviously, they felt that this was fine, or they wouldn't have presented it to us. Okay.
I guess we can vote.
I guess we could vote. Yeah, we've got a motion on the table, so let's see where we go with this. Um, go ahead, Tracy.
Sorry, I just want to clarify, the motion is to defer it, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Chair. With that, we'll take a roll. Commissioner Van Pernis?
Aye.
Commissioner Vitusik?
Aye.
Commissioner Perry, Vice Chair Perry, Ba'ke Aloha, sorry.
Aye.
Commissioner DeFranco?
Aye.
Commissioner Newberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Yates?
Aye.
And Chair Car Smith?
Um, out of principle, I, I say no, just because I was fine with it the way it was, so no.
The motion carries six to one.
Okay. Thank you very much, Tracy. All right. Thank you, everyone, for your patience today. We've got approval of minutes next. Go ahead, Mike.
I move to approve.
Okay. Second from Fay or Barbara? Which, I think it was Fay. Okay, a motion to approve from Mike, and second was Fay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any disapprove? Okay. Minutes are approved. Um, staff, do you have any administrative matters?
No, it's, no administrative matters. Just a reminder that our, um, November meeting is, oh, I'm sorry. Um, we do have a, a number of items that are scheduled for our November. Uh, the main one that we had mentioned is going to be, um, Palamanui. And so, um, just to be prepared for that application, it's going to be a, 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 a thick application. This will be November 19th. It's going to be our, uh, November meeting.
Okay, thank you. On that topic, actually, I wanted to talk a little bit, um, we don't have to go into this. I'm just a little bit concerned about the length of the meetings. I mean, can you imagine if we had Palamanui on the agenda today, where we would be? Uh, I'm not sure what the solution is, because I know we have these, these, um, timeframes that we need to work with, but I'm a little concerned about keeping commissioners all day long. And obviously, we get, we all get a little rummy about now, or a couple hours ago. So is there any way around such long meetings?
I, I'll chime in. I don't think there's a, a lot of options, given this online format that we're in.
Yeah.
I think are probably our best tool is if we had to call a special meeting, uh, because we have too many applications that we're up against deadlines on, we would have to opt for that. Uh, I'd like to avoid that, but it certainly is, today was a good example where I thought you ran a very, as efficiently as you could, and boy, it's, it took all day long, right? So again, you know, we've had about eight commission meetings, and we keep tweaking after every meeting to make it better, and
Yeah, yeah.
We just keep doing that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, with these controversial ones, where we take a couple hours on testimony, it eats up a lot of time, too, right? Mark?
Um, in regards to your question, I'm aware that, um, Palamanui deferred one month. Perhaps I could be asked for again, because I've received, uh, suggestions that their application be considered by the New County Council that takes off our seats in January. So I'm just bringing it up, that there is some official and unofficial, uh, desire to sit Palamanui delays or that the lame duck legislators don't have to deal with.
I'm not where that, sure where that comes from, but it's on the November agenda. Is that correct? Okay, there we go. Anybody else have any comments about these long days, or you guys? Go ahead, Mike.
Um, something that I had mentioned before, I, my experience going to the Board of Land and Natural Resources for approval, sometimes when you go before that board with a controversial item, uh, the board will remove you from the agenda, and basically force you to talk to the intervening parties and the administration in order to try to come up with a resolution prior to being heard on their agenda item. So basically, you'd be bumped back farther in the agenda in order to get an opportunity to try to find compromise with the planning department and with the, um, people who are opposed to the project. If we were to say, look, obviously, this project has a lot of, of public testimony against it, you know, we can ask that the applicant take that opportunity to meet with the public and with the planning department in order to try to come up with a resolution that might make our meeting go a little faster.
Do we have the right to do that, Jeff or Michael?
I think we can request it. I, you know, that we, we run into this problem again with these deadlines, right? We're, we're supposed to bring it to hearing within a particular timeframe, and the commission has to make a decision. If the applicant is not willing to participate or allow an extension, uh, we could find ourselves, um, facing an automatic approval.
Basically, the way they do it at, at the land division or at, at land board is you go to the board, and they say, hey, you know, we want you guys to sit down and talk. You have that option. If you say no, you say no, and you go on with the agenda, and you hear it as it is, but we always say, yes, we want to talk, we want to try to work it out, and if we can come up with a solution in advance that'll make the actual agenda item go faster, it, it helps. If, if both parties say no, we got nothing to talk about, bring on the commission, we proceed as normal.
Just, just, uh, just for the commissioner's, um, knowledge is that, uh, the planning department, consistently, um, sees like the writing on the wall with the, with an application coming before us. We know, um, uh, quite, uh, at an early stage, when an application is going to be, um, pretty contested with the neighbors or issues coming up. And we strongly encourage them to meet with the community, to meet with the neighbors, and they assure us normally that they've done that. Um, but then we question that when it comes to hearing, and everybody is, is, a good example is our last hearing, uh, with all the, that, that applicant, we requested strongly that they meet with the neighbors in the community. They assured us they did, uh, but they could not come to an agreement. And so it was what it was.
Yeah. Okay. Well, good discussion. I think we have good intentions and just keep working on things. So, anybody have anything else? Go ahead.
Thank you.
Um, sorry, last, last thing, I just wanted to suggest to the, um, planning department about a possible amendment to Planning Commission Rule Number Nine. Uh, you know, where, where we are constantly kind of coming up against permits who have been extended and extended and extended, and I would just like to see language, that, that kind of, well, what I, what I wrote down was, the passage of time, changes in the community, changes in the environment, changing perceptions of significance, or incomplete prior evaluations shall be considered by the commission when considering a time extension request on a previously approved project. Um, the federal regulations, thirty-six CFR Part 800, which is the reviewing of historic, effect on historic properties, provides that language, saying that, you know, if after time, you have to reevaluate the effects of the project because the environment changes.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Mike, what, what specific section in Rule Nine are you referring to?
I, I, and, you know, I may be wrong if that's the right place to do it, but it would be in the, uh, request for time extension.
Okay.
Jay, go ahead.
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is not on the agenda, so I would caution the commission to talk about something that's not on the agenda.
Yeah.
Basically, the, the point I'm making is, it's just something that I would like to see on a future agenda, if possible.
Yeah.
Very good.
There is, um, uh, if I could just, um, bring this to the commission's attention, um, in regards to administrative matters, a lot of times we discuss, items that we're working on and, and going to be presenting to the commission at some point. Um, we are actually working on amendments to Rule Nine and Eight based on, uh, Senate Bill 2060, which recently changed the language in two oh five A. And so that would be a good time that we can consider amendments, uh, to those rules. Thank you.
Good. Awesome. Thank you, everyone. It's been a long day. Appreciate your time. The motion to adjourn. Fay's hand went up quick.
So moved.
All right, Fay, and seconded by Perry, all in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mike. And Michael.
Nancy, if you have one more moment left.